I'll call this special joint meeting to order. And obviously, what we're here to do tonight is try to get, just kind of have presentations and get a clear understanding, hopefully on everybody's part, on the issues that are involved here with our water utilities. And having said that, Stan had said that he wanted to make some opening remarks. So Stan, it's all you.
Thanks, Rich. Yeah, this, you know, in the opening statement, I says, Honorable Mayor and City Council Members, I mean, thank you for allowing us to have this meeting. I, along with my fellow trustees, requested this meeting to discuss a reset of negotiations regarding water and sewer services. Since discussions began, the city has lost an administrator, a financial director, and a city council liaison to the water utility. The village has lost an administrator and a public works director. These losses have contributed to our state of negotiations. In early December of 2016, the utility director called to our attention the outdated agreements between the village and the city. As a result, utility and village members met for the first time in February of 2017. The agenda for this meeting outlined four options. One, do nothing. And of course, this option was discarded because it was clear the rules and laws had changed as to who owned what and who was responsible for what and who reported to the regulatory agencies. Option two was separate the utilities. This option was discarded because it was presented by the utility director as being unlikely to be approved by the DNR and the PSC. It would also require North Hudson to purchase the utility, all the utilities, Hudson infrastructure, including well starters, tank boosters, meters, and everything else that goes along with being a regulated utility. Option three, update current agreements. This was agreed to be an option to pursue because it was the easiest option for a quick fix. It would clearly state responsibilities for the respective systems and most likely the least expensive option for both communities. Option four, combine under Hudson Utility Commission. This option remained on the table for further investigation. At the second meeting in February 2017, representatives from Rooker and Melkey, a consulting firm, were in attendance, and it was decided a feasibility study should be done to determine if option three, updating existing agreements, or option four consolidation was a better option. Both Hudson Public Utility Commission and the village board approved the expenditure at the respective March meetings. North Hudson paid half the cost of the study from our general revenues. Hudson Utility paid for the other half from the utility funds. Utility funds come from all ratepayers. In June of 2017, the final draft of the study was completed. Of the eight goals presented in the study, no clear winner was determined. The only identified goal where it could be better to combine was financial. The study determined this goal to be the same by updating the agreement and better by consolidating. However, there would be several financial variables that could alter this determination. One of the important goals was identified as better whether updating agreements or combining was minimizing rates. This goal was considered better if, and I quote, "Hudson maintains rate equality among all its customers and minimizes the use of general rates to fund capacity increases for new growth. Significant rate increases appear unlikely." Since that study, Hudson Utilities has added a new service center, about $1 million, put in a new well into production, at least $3.6 million for the pump, pole, and treatment plant. And I heard at one of the meeting minutes that it costs like 10 minutes. Has increased rates once and another rate increase is pending. These expenditures may not seem much, you know, like much to the utility, but to North Hudson, who is about one quarter the size of Hudson and uses 10% of the services, this is a lot of money to North Hudson ratepayers. Also, in June of 2017, North Hudson created an ad hoc committee to flesh out our options. At the July 17, 2017 council meeting, approval was given to the utility ad hoc to investigate financial legal ramifications of consolidating with North Hudson. In March of this year, the Utilities Commission sent a letter to the village strongly suggesting villages choose between consolidation and wholesale water, or they would recommend to the council termination of our current agreement. The wholesale water option is entirely new to the village since in 2017 it was discarded as an option. April of this year was the first time any financial information was shared with the village. One last note. I was born and raised in Hudson. I grew up one block from City Hall. My father retired from Hudson Public Works in the mid-'80s after 25 years of service to the city. I saw the old fire station built brick by brick. Over the decades, I have also seen major issues develop between Hudson and North Hudson about every 20 years or so and be resolved to mutual benefit of both communities. My sincerest hope is this issue will not be any different. Rich, back to you.
Okay. All right. So, thank you, Stan. Kip, I'm going to turn this over to you right now. You want to, is there anything you want to go through? Kip?
Yeah, it's just I'm muted there. No, I mean, I think Stan pretty, you know, did a pretty good job of covering everything. I guess it's, what do you guys want to discuss? You know, we know that the current agreements, hopefully everybody's read the current agreements that we're dealing with, you know, from 1983 on the water side. And like Stan had mentioned in there that, you know, when I started here in 2015, I don't think any, I don't, I don't know if any of us even knew that these agreements were even here. You know, I hadn't seen them until it was brought up in the 2015 DNR sanitary report. So that's what got me kind of digging into them and looking and seeing what we're supposed to be following and what we're supposed to be doing here from a utility standpoint in regards to the village of North Hudson. So that's kind of what got us there. You know, we had, like Stan said, you know, this has been a long process that we've been trying to work through this. You know, there was a bunch of different routes that we could go, things of that nature, and the ad hoc committees, like Stan had mentioned, you know, people have changed on and off of those ad hoc committees. So I get, you know, where some of the information that was discussed, you know, three, four years ago might not have been brought forward and things like that. But from the city standpoint, you know, we've been trying to get this back to the table so we can get this, hopefully start, you know, down a path of resolution. And it just seemed like we weren't getting anywhere. So that is when the utility commission, at that point, you know, we contacted Lori Kobza, our attorney, you know, that's helping us negotiate through this or navigate through this, I should say, in regards to that agreement, the '83 agreement, and what can we do to get this back on track and get moving again. And that's where the recommendation came from the utility commission to terminate the 1983 agreement, where we are required to give a 90-day notice before January 1 of 2021, which would put us to the October 1 of 2020, is when the council would need to make that decision. And we can talk more about that, things like that, but I guess, I don't know if people have questions or I don't know how you want to do this, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Well, you know, from my perspective, this is all new territory, you know? It's the first joint meeting I think we've ever actually had with another council. So I'm just glad that all the members are here from what I can see. Well, I'm happy that the members that are here are here. How is that?
Rich, one thing I want to, I'll tell you right now is Tim Zeiss, our trustee Zeiss, is here, and he has been on our ad hoc committee from the origination. And I would hope that anyone that has questions or whatever for, you know, from our perspective, please, you know, address to Tim, and I'm pretty sure he'll be able to answer any of your questions.
All right. So one of the things that we've been provided with is memorandum from Boardman Clark. Lori Kobza, did I say that right? Kobza?
I don't know.
And I think this is a good starting point unless somebody would object to that.
Well, I mean, so I think everybody's got a copy.
Aaron, we can't hear you.
Can you hear me?
No. I mean, we can, but your volume is very low.
How well people that are on Zoom can you hear me?
We're just low, Aaron, that's all. Very faint, very faint.
Weird. Okay. I'll try to talk loudly into my microphone, I guess. So I think everybody has a copy of that, and I think it's been reviewed by the, I mean, the PUC went through it at their last meeting, and that's what they're basing their recommendation to the council on as far as the recommend, I terminate the agreement.
You're good, Aaron. I think maybe Brian turned you up.
Okay. Thanks. So, thanks, Brian. So, you know, I don't know if we want to, you know, if you want to go through the whole agreement or the whole memo, if that's necessary. And I mean, I think the summary is pretty much what everybody said. There's, our current agreement's outdated, we need to fix it. From our point of view, the two options that are feasible and on the table are either the consolidation option or we move to providing water at a wholesale level and let North Hudson handle their system on their own. And so that's what's been discussed at the PUC, and that's what, so what the recommendation is to the council to do. And basically what the memo says is that if we do terminate the agreement effective January 2021, nothing changes on January 1, 2021. It just means that that agreement is no longer in effect. What has to happen then is that we have to continue to work with North Hudson to figure out what the next step is. And that's either consolidation, that's looking at moving to a wholesale provider, or if for some reason the opinion out there is, is that there is some way to do some sort of other agreement that would be acceptable to the city, to the PUC, and the DNR, then that's something that can be looked at. But we have to work through that process. And what it means with having an agreement that's terminated then is that if we can't come to some sort of agreement, we need then go to the PSC, PUC, and just say, we can't come to an agreement. Here's what we're proposing. We need guidance on what we need to do with this to move it forward. So, I mean, yeah, I don't know. I would say is there specific questions about the memo might be the best way to handle it.
Well, I'll start, Aaron, and Honorable Mayor, this is Tim Zeiss, trustee. I'll add a couple of comments and thank you, Aaron, for kind of summarizing that activity from your lawyer that submitted this memorandum. A couple of things I just want to add, the fact is, is that one of the, some of the delays and Kip mentioned, you know, the three-year type ad hoc sessions that went on, and there's a long delay through a couple periods there. But one key things, key factors we're looking for is finances. We look, you know, for us to make any type of decisions, we have to complete our financial review of what the billing detail is behind that. And we want to know that, how much the meter size is, the water usage for each address, the size within each resident itself, each ratepayer, and basically just overall summary of those finances. Whether we have to decide to go wholesale, whether we decide to update our current agreements, whether we decide to go to a consolidation, those detailed financial information is what we're looking to try to obtain. We've asked for it, like we stated back in March of, or back in 2017.
From my understanding, we've sent that multiple times, including most recently, I think in maybe March?
But Aaron, it doesn't provide us the final.
We've sent you everything that you've requested. That's where we get the frustrating part is, is that we don't know what you're looking for when we keep sending you all the financials. I mean, we send you, from what I understand, and again, I'm not the one actually putting the financials together to send to you, but we're taking exactly what you're asking us and sending it to you. So if it's, if you're not getting what it is that you're looking for, we just need to know what it is.
Okay. We'll clarify that. That's a key.
Everything's online. Our financial stuff's online for the most part. Everything's easily available, but we're actually happy to break it out and try to figure it out, too. But I'm trying to look through my file here about when the last time we sent it, but I don't know. But regardless, I'm.
Regardless, yeah, yeah. I'm not going to.
We just need to know the specifics of what it is where we didn't get you with that last round.
Okay.
Because I know it was a big packet that we actually literally hand-delivered to make sure that you got it this time, and there wasn't any, you know, mistakes with receiving it or not all of it.
Okay. We'll clarify that, Aaron. And the other activity that I want to call out in the memorandum is the activity about leasing. Hudson leases the mains from the village, and that's a difference in that Oak Creek example that's called out within the memorandum. And it's our understanding that we're responsible for maintaining the structure and exercising the valves, flushing the hydrants, whatever that maintaining might be, and that Hudson's responsible for the quality of water. So the village understands that this is why, potentially why DNR combined some of our water public ID testing, because they're leasing, you guys are leasing the mains from the village of North Hudson. I could, we could be wrong there, but I think that's the difference within this memorandum that we all received from Boardman Clark. And I think that's one key thing to call out. Now, that might be, need more further discussion on that. We talked about that. Like you mentioned, go back to the table, talk more about that activity and how it's an example from PSC policy. But we feel that's a big difference within one example of the Oak Creek itself that's called out in the memorandum.
So, can you expound on that a little bit then, Tim? I mean, so if it is a difference, a significant difference, and Oak Creek would not apply, what does that mean to you?
Well, Hudson's able to expense, and they're able to recover those costs from that leasing. In the situation with Oak Creek and the two municipalities involved, there are one actually owns that side of it, and that's why the wholesale was pushed out that way. I, we feel that's why it doesn't line up directly with the memorandum that's been put in front of us. I don't know how that changes, potentially another rate increase, if you're not taking the expense, able to expense that type of leasing from North Hudson, and not able to recover those costs. We don't know if those, how that overall rate increase, I'm sure that how that leasing is, how that leasing is happening. We know our ratepayers pay in for that individual on the, after individual bill and goes into the utility fund. We don't know how that lease payment back is made to Hudson.
But she's not.
That overall falls right into the somewhat line of the financial information we're looking to find, just kind of how that all is balanced out.
Lori, can you clarify, maybe, but the whole lease versus thing, it wasn't necessarily financial? Was the concern, it was the fact that the city doesn't own the water lines? So Tim's right, we're responsible for the quality, but how can we certify the quality of water that runs through lines that we don't own? While we may lease them, we have no direct responsibility or ownership of them. So isn't that where the issue comes in? Is it, or is it a financial? I guess I'm confused by the financial question with it.
Well, back in 1996, we know that the PSC approved this current agreement. That's been, we found that out there under the PSC side of it, of the leasing side of it. I guess my question, Aaron, is that when our ratepayers go pay that rate into the actual utility fund, a portion, and how is that being paid back to Hudson through what fund? Is it coming out of the utility fund that we're already contributing, or is it coming out of the general expenses of the city? I mean, just some information we want to kind of follow up on so we understand that.
Which is why I said I think the best thing you can do is just give us a list of your questions.
Put all that down here.
We'll be happy to respond.
Yeah.
But I guess I was asking, Lori, if you could weigh in if you can. I mean, maybe this is not something you can answer, but does our concern in your memo have anything to do with financials versus the fact that we just don't own the lines, regardless of leased or not?
This is Lori Kobza. I'm the author of the Boardman Clark memo. And I was working with the city of Oak Creek when that decision was made, and it was primarily management and control quality of those lines, that it's, you can't control the quality of water if you don't own the lines over which that water's provided. And lots of things have changed with regard to water utilities over the years, certainly since the 1983 agreement was entered into, things like the inside of the pipes, the quality of that, what, how that affects the water delivered to customers. Water loss issues are much more important now, and none of those things can be handled if the supplying utility does not own the distribution system over which they're providing water. And one other thing I wanted to point out, this idea that somehow a lease is different. There may be one other community out there, but just recently, this issue was brought to the PSC with regard to the city of Appleton and the village of Little Shoot. They had a situation somewhat similar to this, and they suggested this lease idea as an option, and the PSC said that was not an available option to them. So I do not believe the lease agreement or the lease arrangement is approvable by the PSC.
But if we find, Lori, that it was, and I don't want to debate you now, but I think we have found that it was approved at one time by PSC, and we know things have changed, right? So.
Right. I think that's the whole idea and one reason why Hudson is looking to say, things have changed, we need to change, we're not comfortable operating under this older agreement, we want to move to the more standard agreement. We are a more standard arrangement, one way or another, and so those are the options, that the current arrangement really isn't something that's still on the table, is my understanding.
Okay. Thank you.
Do we have any questions coming from, let's start with the Hudson council? Anybody?
Good to have you. Randy. I'm just wondering how we arrived at this position. I mean, I read the paperwork. What is it North Hudson wants and what is it that we need? Do we cancel the agreement one and then go to the drawing board and come up with a new one that we're both happy with? That's my questions.
Who are you asking this of, Randy?
I guess Stan or Tim?
Okay.
We can go back a little bit of history, Randy. Thank you for the question on the ad hoc, and I'll bring that. I think Kip can contest some of the history behind it. You know, we met back, like Stan stated, back in 2015 or whatever, we formed that committee. And the first couple sessions really talked initially about the old agreements back in 1983, and we just, we were not going anywhere with the discussion. So we felt to have proper discussion, let's look at the combining of the both, you know, the combination of combining that proposal. And then Kip brought on the legal side of it, and she went through all of the, all the activities it would take to combine these utilities, and then eventually drew up the two agreements. It was never brought, I mean, the board discussed it, and the village board discussed it, but we never voted on it, but we certainly moved to that direction. It became good constructive type conversations, I think it would agree to that. I mean, we talked about what potentially would happen. Now, there was certainly a lot of, and I wouldn't say a lot, there's a number of things within that consolidation that we currently did not agree on, and that might be another step we go to, and I don't know if we can do that tonight, but I just think it's a key thing that we can look at some of those individual areas. And then as we started going further into some of the past history, digging up some of the amendments and addendums to some of the agreements, of course, back then, there's a lot of handshakes, as we all know, people, and a lot of just gentleman-type agreements. We just felt that the consolidation without some of the compensations behind what we built here in North Hudson was a key factor. I mean, and that was one big key thing that came out of one of the agreements that was drawn up. And ultimately, you know, on one of the last ad hoc committees, we met with the two groups, and we just said at this point, we're not looking for consolidation. But then came the option of wholesale, which that led us to this meeting here tonight, Randy. So what are we all for? We're out to make, I mean, I'll be honest with you. I mean, this has been existing for 45, 50 years. I mean, it started, and I don't, I don't know, I don't have the history behind everything, but I do know the people who were involved, and I talked to many people who know of all this, and the first question they ask is why it changed. Now, I can understand where Kip's coming from as far as, you know, contesting the fact is that making sure our water tests is, you know, and having to go to DNR and making sure it's good, you know? That's a key thing. But I've asked a question, what is Hudson gaining from it other than potentially that? Is there, I guess, I don't know. We don't know. I don't know, I don't know the answer, Randy, behind it all.
Do you feel like we're forcing you into something here? I'm just trying to get.
No. Well, there's been a three-year type from the ad hoc when it first started to where we are right now. I mean, there was many opportunities, I guess, for us to step up and ask more questions. I'll take ownership of that, to be honest with you. There's been a lot of delays in there, looking for that financial information, you know? We had, you guys had a change in your personnel, we had, you know, change in ours, you know? So we totally understand some of that delay. I'm not talking, Aaron, about the current financial information, I'm just talking that year and a half we went without kind of getting that data. But that's beyond the point. But, you know, we do feel like small little, you know, the David and Goliath there, sitting here waiting for things to happen beyond, you know, some sense, I mean, but I just want to make sure, you know, we have a responsibility for our citizens in North Hudson, of course, to make sure we do the right things. I can talk to people who were back in those, you know, did those initial agreements back in '83, and I know that's the same thing. If you read the feasibility study, that was, I hope you all got to see that, that was presented to us by Rupert Melkey that we both invested in, they make some clear, clear points in there, Randy, that talks about the fact is that, you know, we all have to, we have to all make the right decision here, and, you know, that's why we're going to make sure that we do that to representing our North Hudson village.
Do you think it's possible to amicably come to a decision?
I do. I think we're all adults, I certainly do. I think we can make this right. I really do. We just need to get back into discussions. I mean, Lori, the lawyer made a good point, and our attorney made a good point. We need to sit down with PSC. We need to sit down with PSC, we need to sit down with DNR, we need to talk about what all, you know, some of the options potentially could be, you know? I certainly agree.
Because I agree with Stan, we need to work this out. We don't need to drag it out, we need to figure it out.
Yep. Yep.
So, Kip, what, if I can interject here a second, time-wise here, what do we have? We've got to give 90-day notice, which means that something has to be done. If we're going to do something this year, it has to be done here very quickly. The question, I guess, then comes down to, does it need to be done this year?
At the advice of our, well, yes. And I'll give you the reason why. We do have to give a 90-day notice before it automatic, before that agreement automatically renews on January 1 of 2021. So that's what's pushing for the, you know, you basically have September for the city council to make the decision if they want to terminate that agreement. Now, when we say terminate that agreement, as I believe Aaron or somebody had mentioned, that doesn't mean that January 1, things change, you know? We stop providing service. Nothing will change at that point. But if we do not, if the city council does not vote to terminate that agreement, you will have to wait another entire year to change that agreement. Because at that point, January 1, or if we go past October 1, we will not have, we won't meet the 90-day time period, and then it will automatically renew for another year on January 1. So we're thinking that it's best practice, or it should be the best for city, the city council to terminate that agreement. It just keeps our options open. You know, we don't want to close the door on something like that for an entire year while we are trying to, you know, work through this whole situation.
All right. So, and I think the other part of this, too, is that we have our legal opinion, and we have our staff opinion, and we have our utility commission opinion, that this agreement is not how we need to move forward. It's not valid for, it's not a best practice for a number of reasons, it's not legal for a number of reasons. So to just leave it in effect is not, it's basically just saying we're ignoring it then. It's fine. Terminating shows that we recognize that this is not how we need to move forward, and now we have to get to the. now we have to get to the table and figure out something new. But we can't just say, fine, yeah, maybe our attorney says it's not legal, maybe our staff says this is not the way that they can operate effectively, or feel comfortable signing off on reports and things like that, or that are PUC, but it's, the reality is, is that we need to terminate this agreement, and then force everyone, and the PSC included, to help make a decision here of what needs to happen, because the agreement can't move forward.
So, let me ask Stan, and/or Tim, or I guess anybody else from North Hudson, do you see an issue, if we were to, if we were to terminate the agreement this year, and what you've heard now is that it doesn't mean that everything stops, I mean, we would still continue under the current, apparently under the current agreement until we have a new one in place. Do any of the issues change that have been listed out here? I mean, do you see the issues as being different if this, if we terminate this agreement? The issues stay the same, don't they? We still have to resolve these same issues?
Yeah, there's still issues, I mean, and that feasibility study...
But they don't change, do they? They're still the same.
They don't change. No. No, the feasibility, Mayor, basically detailed out what the, what the issues were, and we know we have to walk, work through them. They didn't give us any direction as far as where to go with that feasibility study, but they certainly did call out the individual issues that were, what came to the table here.
And, sorry, Tim.
No, go ahead.
And I'll just piggyback on that feasibility study. We were very, very clear with Rupert Milkie, when we talked to them on, we did not want an opinion from Rupert Milkie. We were just looking for pros and cons. So, that's what that feasibility study did. It laid out all the pros, all the cons of different scenarios. So, the city council, the village board, you know, so at that point, decisions could be made. We didn't want, we didn't want an opinion at that point from Rupert Milkie. So, that's why when you read it, you will not find, here's what we recommend.
Right.
They don't say that. You know, it's just pros and cons. And the thing with that Rupert Milkie study, it also dealt with not only the 1983 agreement for water, it dealt with the seventy-nine agreement interceptor line, it dealt with the sewer agreement from, what was it, nineteen seventy-nine with a nineteen ninety-one amendment? So, I mean, it dealt with, with all of these agreements, you know. Today, we're just talking primarily about the water agreement, but, you know, there is, there is a wastewater agreement, and there is an interceptor line agreement, too, so, that are, that are actually older than this one.
But you would agree, you would agree, Kip, it does lay out all the individual...
Oh, sure. That feasibility study, you know, and hopefully, hopefully, everybody had, I know, I know you just got it today, but hopefully, you know, in the next couple days, you have time to read it, they lay it out very, very well, you know, on pros and cons, so...
All right. Anybody from North Hudson, any of the other members up there got anything, any questions, any comments?
Is this a question maybe for, I don't know, Eric?
I'm asking North Hudson first, Paul.
Oh, sorry.
Anybody, North Hudson?
I have a question.
Okay.
There have been some deadlines that have been thrown around related to the Highway Thirty-Five project.
Excuse me, we got feedback coming.
Kathy.
We have to mute your computer, Kathy.
As I say, Kathy, are you in the same room as Paul?
No.
Yeah.
Oh, because you were both lighting up at the same time.
No, I'm not.
Okay, now you're better. Go ahead.
Somebody else was unmuted. So, my question was related to deadlines. We had been hearing that there were deadlines related to the Highway Thirty-Five project or other deadlines that were in, from, you know, from the DNR or other things. I'd just like it to be clear, if there are deadlines, what are they and who's imposing them?
I don't know, maybe Kip can answer this. I'm not aware of any, the only deadline we're working under is we have to give the ninety-day notice to cancel the agreement. But I don't think we have any timelines tied to the Thirty-Five project to have to get something done or anything like that.
No, there's no deadlines tied to the Thirty-Five project. The, I'm just trying to find my email from DNR. So, so basically, this, this issue with the, with the outdated, I can find that, I can find that DNR email here, I'm not sure if I've got it here or not, but in terms of deadlines, the, this issue was brought up in the 2015 sanitary survey, which is a, which is a complete survey of the water system. So, it was brought up in there, it was again noted in our sanitary survey from DNR in the 2018 sanitary survey, and, I don't know if I've got the eighteen here. So, and basically, what, what they've said in those two is that something needs to happen. We need to, we need to work these agreements out, figure out what's going to go on, because otherwise, they, there is a chance that they will be coming back in 2020, end of this year, first part of next year is when my next sanitary survey is due. And that's when potential changes could happen to sampling requirements, to just different requirements that, that the utility is under. So, that's, that's the, that's the worry. The other, the other thing is, is public service, back in 2016, when we did our, our first rate case with the Public Service Commission down in Madison, it was also brought up there in terms of that the agreements, they didn't know anything about them, they'd never heard of them, seen them, anything of that nature. They were very curious as to how this whole situation was, was working. You know, how was Hudson, Hudson providing water service over mains that we do not own, things like that, so they were very curious about that. So, the comment was made that if these agreements are not updated, something changes, whatever that might be, and you got to understand, here's the thing with PSC and DNR, they don't tell you really what to do until it's just time where they're going to come in and they're going to make changes. You know, they, they kind of leave it up to the communities to make recommendations back to them and say, here's what we're thinking, here's what we'd like to do. And then they'll review it at that point and make changes or recommendations or whatever they want to do at that point. But it was also brought up from PSC that, that there is a potential that they could hold up a rate case until this is, is resolved. Back in 2016, they did not hold it up because it was so large, because it was the first rate case that we did in like twenty-two years. So, they had so much information to go through that they really did not want to tackle this at that point. We are currently in a rate review right now down in Madison. We haven't heard anything back on this topic from them, but it won't surprise me if we So, there really isn't any hard deadline date, other than what the DNR has mentioned, you know, when they come back for our 2021 sanitary survey, that they, they wanted to see changes to the agreements.
And just to clarify one thing, Kip, and then I'll just comment, so the DNR was, was more of a recommendation of some of the issues that we had to fix, and I think we did look at those. I think it said that was an eleven-by-seventeen sheet. But also a comment, I think that's healthy, knowing that the fact that the PSC is not going to come here and tell us what we need to do. I think we're neighbors, we need to work this out. I think it's important that we talk and communicate and get this all settled, and I'll spend three years, and Kip and I know, because we've been together from the very beginning, but I think that's healthy, knowing the fact that we can do it locally, not worry about somebody in Madison to make our decisions.
Well, and I'll just, I guess, yes, Tim, I agree with that, but I don't agree with the statement that the PSC won't come in and do anything.
No, I know.
If we don't do anything, things will, things will be changing. And that's why, you know, for all these years, and Tim, you know, you and I have talked about this, that's why we tried to get out in front of this thing, you know, for, for the last how many years? Because we don't, we don't want, we don't want some outside third party coming in and telling us how to, what to do and how to, how to operate, so...
Right.
So, yep, I agree that, that they, they won't, well, they will come in at some point if we, if we just continue stalls.
Anybody else from the North Hudson council?
Mr. Mayor, this is...
Go ahead.
This is Paul Mahler.
Paul, are you from the North Hudson council?
I am the attorney for North Hudson.
Okay, got it.
I guess one just point of clarification, there's been a couple statements that, you know, in order to terminate the existing agreement, it has to be done by October 1st. You know, the parties next year, when they reach an agreement, can voluntarily terminate the agreement at any time. And then, I guess the question is, if the agreement's terminated, what rules are the city in North Hudson going to operate under as of January 1st? And unless those rules are different, which I'm not sure about the intention of the city is, then I don't see the harm in leaving the agreement in place that has at least some written rules.
All right.
Maybe Laurie, you might, maybe you can answer that?
Did you ask Laurie that?
Yeah, I just, she'd probably be the one to, our attorney would probably be the one to answer the why, why we do, why she's recommending to terminate that agreement. And from my understanding, you know, we basically operate under these rules at least for the 2021 year.
This is Laurie. So, under the law, a utility has to continue to serve until the PSC approves different service arrangements. So, it would continue the way it is, but it would allow the PSC and Hudson Utilities to ask the PSC to assist in modifying the arrangement. Otherwise, really, the city of Hudson has no say, other than if North Hudson agrees. And hopefully, Hudson and North Hudson agree, but I think to put the parties on an even footing, it would be important to terminate the agreement so that nothing is holding up the agreement of the parties, and the parties going together to the PSC to ask for help in resolving the matter.
Paul, any comment?
Yes, I don't fully understand why the parties can't do that while the agreement's still in place. It seems to me that by terminating puts the city on a stronger foothold than it does the village.
I guess I wouldn't agree with that characterization, because if the agreement is in place, the city of North Hudson really only can proceed if the village of North Hudson agrees with that. And so, the village of North Hudson essentially has a veto power, where if the agreement is gone, both parties have to work together at the PSC in order to get a change.
Anybody else from North Hudson? All right, Paul, you've been waiting.
That's fine. I just don't see it as, as an even playing field, as she describes it, because she states that, you know, if North Hudson doesn't agree, the city's just going to proceed.
Okay. Paul DeZeele.
I'm just trying to figure out if it's wiser to terminate and move forward, or if we just leave the agreement in place and start negotiations.
Well, I guess the only concern we have is we've tried to start negotiations. This has been, this hasn't, and I have not have been involved. So, I'm just trying to kind of provide a little bit of a summary from my understanding. But I mean, you've got your utility board chair here who's been going through this for a while. You've got your council member that's a representative on the utility commission that's been going through this for a while. I think there's a reason that Laurie just explained, and also in the memo, of why we're recommending doing the termination, and why we think that's the best way to address the fact, the concerns that we have with the current agreement, and get everybody to the table, and a decision will be made next year then. Something will happen. We will get to that point. We hope we can work it out and just have an agreement, but that, I believe, has been what's been trying to be occurred, trying to have happened for the last three years, is trying to work it out and hope we come to an agreement. I think it's, we're at the point now where I think everybody made their kind of point from the staff side about why we're recommending doing this. And again, like I said, I think you've got a lot of, you have representative council members, and, you know, your utility board chair here, who have a lot of history with this, too, that I think are on the same page with, with that recommendation.
I get that, but, so, let's say we do terminate, and then we try to go into January, is there any timeline on that process? I mean, could that be six months, a year, two years before the agreement is reached? Or we could operate without, operate the agreement, like a year or two?
I think Laurie could answer that one better than I can, but my understanding is, is that we would attempt to, but what we do is we'd sit down with the PSC and the DNR, and we'd work through, here's what we have, and eventually, we would get a decision from them about, okay, we've heard everybody, but here's what we got to do to get this done. And we would have then those thirty, third parties directly involved in getting something done that's acceptable at the state level, too.
This is Laurie, and I would agree with that.
Thank you.
Any, any other council members from Hudson, questions, comments?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, if I may jump in here, so, Paul, Andrew, I'm the chairman for the Utilities Commission here in Hudson. You know, Mr. Zeiss even mentioned himself, you know, we have been working on this for a few years. We've reached out, we've tried to come to the table on this thing, and really, we've just come down to sending that letter out in March, and then finally just getting a response recently on that. So, just to piggyback off what Aaron said, this, this has not gone, gone without us, you know, extending the branch here to try and figure something out before it got to this point. And now, the council has unanimously voted to go this route.
You mean, the commission?
Yeah, commission.
Yes, the commission, excuse me, yes.
Yeah, but just to add to that, Andrew's comment there, we didn't get any of the financials until April, so that, that was the year and a half, a year and a half before we got any of that, Andrew. Even though Aaron stated that we might, you know, they sent us what they sent us, but it took that long to get it for you.
I understand, sir. And I guess, I guess my only, my only comment back to that, you know, it was mentioned at the beginning of the meeting here, it was mentioned, you know, a little bit of time passed. Well, sir, three years is hardly a little bit of time to respond to a, to a letter or an email, to get people to the table. And, you know, I understand that we're, we're neighbors here, and I definitely want to see this resolved, and it will be resolved. But for the time being, this is, this is the best option that we believe that we have.
All right, seriously, I got to chime in here. I mean, you're the head of the Public Utilities Commission. Can you explain to me why we've had a member on your commission for twenty years that has voted, and all of a sudden, when we changed the, we changed representatives, you took the voting rights away? How about that?
We're abiding by the contract. We're abiding by the agreement. So, are you picking and choosing when you want the contract to work and when it doesn't?
Hey, I think Kathy, this isn't on the agenda. I mean, I don't think this is a conversation point for this meeting.
The discussion tonight is on whether to consolidate, not the membership of the commission or voting rights or anything like that. So, that's really what it's focused on, is options regarding consolidation and as we've been discussing.
I'm just trying to correct information that is not, oh, I'm just...
It doesn't really pertain to the consolidation question.
This is, actually, I don't know where your agenda came from, but Village of North Hudson requested the meeting, and, you know, it was so we could do a reset, so we could have the opportunity to look at this new option that was thrown out recently about wholesale water. We believe we need to get our financials figured out, and we are finding more and more information that we were missing. I actually asked for some of the financials after our treasurer asked for the financials, and we realized that when Brenda left, that you might have needed more time, but we have tried to get specific answers, and we haven't been able to get those answers until recently, and we still don't believe we have them all, as Tim stated, to be able to actually give you an answer. And then, you know, the agreements that you guys gave out to us, I mean, basically, you wanted us to hang on to the liability for the infrastructure that we're going to give you free, which was a $3 million worth of infrastructure. you free, which was a $3 million worth of infrastructure at least. You wanted us to still be liable for that. We assume that's because in a meeting that you, when Kip went before the city council, you guys weren't too happy about the idea of taking responsibility for this $3 million worth of infrastructure that you knew nothing about. We've always thought that the best path here was to correct the problems that Kip was having with the current agreements by just rewriting them, straightening those things out. Uh, and it would have been a lot cheaper and a lot quicker and we wouldn't even be in this meeting had we taken that course to just do a simple rewrite of the 83 agreements. Uh, and somebody asked the question earlier, do we feel like we're being forced? I do. It just, it certainly feels like we're being forced because we're the little guy.
You've had, you've had three years to get back to us, sir.
And you had a year and a half to, and you had a year. And you had a year, you had a year and a half to get us the financials during that three year, which we just got. There are, we have memos where Kip was asked saying that he was sitting down in 2017 to review the financials. We didn't get those till 2020. We have those memos. We have a ton of information. All I'm saying is, we're just asking for a little reset to let us look at the financials now that we're getting them, to get every financial that we need to help us represent North Hudson. And we've always felt like the, the Public Utility Commission is a public utility commission for the village and the city, but we're getting told we gotta do what's best for the city by the PUC who is supposed to represent us, not just the city.
I need to jump in and clarify that my understanding is, is Brenda did send the financials multiple times over the past number of years. Um, and we kept getting the, we, we, whenever we'd try to push the agreement again, then we get the question for financials again. So this last time literally is why we hand-delivered them, to make sure that it cannot be said that you didn't get the financials this time. So again, I wasn't here, but from everything that, it was numerous times that Brenda was providing financial information. So again, I think regardless of all of this at this point, canceling, terminating the agreement doesn't change any of this reset or conversations and trying to work it out or do whatever, but it forces that we're gonna do something and it's not gonna be three more years until we're sitting down again and having this conversation. Um, I, you know, I, I think it gives everybody plenty of time. You know, it's, it's August right now, September, you know, you know, give us a list of what more financial information you need, we can run through it. You know, if you have concerns about the consolidation, we have never heard them. I believe the consolidation draft agreements were sent to you three years ago, um, and we've never heard any comment back on, here's our concerns with those agreements. Over the past three years, we could've discussed the concerns with those agreements and tried to figure out, okay, so this doesn't work with the consolidation, what are options? What can we do? And I recognize that, I don't think anybody when they were sent three years ago expected them to be approved as is, but when there was zero response, now is not the time to say, well, we want more time to, to look at some of that, you know, I, I, we have more time, we can keep going.
Aaron, we didn't have the agreements three years ago. Take a look at the, when we got the agreements, it was not three years ago.
Yep, when we sent them the agreements.
You're on, you're on you, Kip.
I'll, I'll dig them out. Um, the consolidation, the, the agreements that we sent, we hand, were sent to the village on January 30th, 2018. So.
I apologize, two years.
Two, 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 two and a half, two and a half years. So that's when they were, that's when they were delivered.
And if you look back at every time we've gone through this village and city, which has been, this is like the third time, over decades ago, the last time, it's taken two years each time for us to come back and come up with another agreement. We're saying, you know, what is the rush? And, and I, I realize that's, Aaron, I saw that look. That was go, that was good. Um, you just hit us with something new this year and that's the wholesale water thing. And we're like, okay, what is that all about? And we don't have the professional staff to, it, it takes us little ad hoc people a bit of time to, to understand what that means and what it's gonna do to the village. You just brought that up this year.
Well, the, the wholesale thing was brought up because the last meeting that we had, uh, the village was adamant about not consolidating. You know, and, and let's remember that for, for three and a half years, four years, whatever this has been going on, it has been the recommendation of the entire ad hoc committee, not just the city of Hudson members or not just the village of North Hudson members, the entire ad hoc committee to pursue the consolidation route. You know, we discussed, you know, years ago, okay, do we pursue one route, two routes? You know, the, the consensus was to pursue the consolidation route because we didn't want to spend tons of money pursuing multiple routes, um, and, and things like that. So we were always under the assumption, Brian, that the village was on board with the consolidation. Well, then when we heard, you know, what, a month or two months ago, whatever it was when we met last time, um, that 100% the village is not interested in consolidation, that's when we had to go back to our attorney and try to figure out, okay, now what do we do?
No.
We're, we're, we're back to, okay, what do, what legally do we do now? You know, since we.
I believe the letter you sent us asking us to make a decision, you placed wholesale in there before we even met with you and told you about, um, going, uh, I mean, moving consolidation off the table. You had listed wholesale in your email when you, the letter you sent it to us way back in June or March.
The one, yeah, the one where you said, you know what, you know, if you guys don't make a decision, so we decided, all right, let's talk to the board and let's make a decision. The board came back and said no on consolidation for the reasons I already listed, a 15% surcharge on everybody in North Hudson because you didn't know what infrastructure you were taking over and no liability on your part for taking over $3 million worth of infrastructure. So the consolidation agreements that you wrote, we had our attorney look at it, she struck that liability thing first thing.
But you never sent that to us. You're bringing it up tonight, not two years ago or even a year ago after your attorney had a year to review it. That's the issue that we're keep running into is you're saying this now, two years after you've received the agreements. Well, okay, we got it, but what do you, so that's where we're at this point. And what we're saying with the other option being wholesale is that we still do not believe legally, we can just update our current agreement. Us not taking over ownership of your lines, we still feel is the deal breaker. Now, as we, if we cancel the agreement and we start going through this process and we sit down with the P, PSC and, and other things can come up out of it where possibly that is, you know, something where they would be willing to allow, at least it's something then that we could discuss at that time. But our, the legal opinion we have right now and what we're working under is really we're, just updating our agreement doesn't address that underlying issue of not owning the lines. And so that's where consolidation is in play. But as talked about at the meeting where, um, your representative on the PUC said, you don't want to consolidate, you don't want to lose control of, uh, uh, control that you have over your system, that's fine, but then we need to move to this wholesale, that's our only other option. It's, that we feel is our only other option. And that's what the legal advice that we're being given is our only other option. So that's why that's there. That's the two options we're working under. But again, we, we don't, you know, the consolidation concerns, I mean, if that's still on the table, great, but give us a list of the concerns of why you won't consolidate or what are the changes your attorney wants in that agreement and then we have something to, to discuss and we can do that. We can do that as we move forward, even if we cancel the agreement effective January 1. Um, but we'd like that, that, like I said, just get us what you want and we will provide it to you. If you have concerns about the consolidation agreements, give us your attorney's marked up versions, we have something to talk about. If you want specific financial information that you have not received yet, just give us a list and we'll get it to you. Um, but that's all part of this process as we work through what, what happens next, regardless of what it looks like in the end.
Appreciate that. I mean, we, like Stan stated right at the beginning, when the, this whole thing started in December of 2016, when Kip first sent a letter to Gloria, we shortly thereafter, like six months later, had her retire, which slowed us down. And, and then we were trying to get financials and Brenda retired and it, just things have, we, we've run into some roadblocks along the way on both sides as far as the, the speed goes, but we have been moving pretty rapidly over the last year. There, the deficiencies, which are recommendations, Kip, uh, would agree, he's told us deficiencies are often recommendations from the DNR. We've talked to the DNR, the DNR just wants basically us to get a new agreement together. Um, as far as what we've seen from the PSC and letters that were sent to Rukert and Milky, they don't like to get involved in agreements between municipalities. So it should be up to us, between the two of us. And we just, we're hopeful that the, the, the PUC is representing both of us in these matters.
All right, Lori?
Yeah, could I just talk about one thing, um, because I don't know if it's been made clear, kind of the, the different structures that are out there, because we keep saying wholesale, retail, and, and just to be clear on what those terms mean. So retail service means, um, when a utility provides service directly to that customer. All right, so, um, you're providing the service to the customer at their house. That's when you're providing retail service. Wholesale service is when one community provides service to another community at one or two locations, it's metered at that location, then that community takes the water and delivers it to the customers themselves. And there are lots and lots of wholesale arrangements around the state of Wisconsin that's not at all unusual. Um, just like North Hudson, many other communities like to maintain control of their own distribution systems. What makes this so unusual is that even though North Hudson owns their distribution system, it's Hudson that's being the retail service provider to the customer and that is what's so unusual. That's the one piece, um, that would change in a wholesale situation. In a wholesale situation, North Hudson would have to take over and be responsible for the one that's providing service to their own residents. Hudson would continue to provide service to the North Hudson boundaries, they'd continue to get water, um, or from their wells that are in North Hudson, they could, that would continue. It's only the one thing that would change, this isn't some huge change, the one thing that would change is that North Hudson would now be responsible for getting the water to their own customers. Um, so that's what we're talking about. That is, the two typical situations in Wisconsin are either retail service or wholesale service. What you've got in your agreement is not at all typical and it would never be approved by the PSC today.
Anybody?
Never be approved by the PSC today?
Right, a new one. It would not be approved. If you went in with a new agreement, it would not be approved. They just denied that, they just denied that for another community earlier this year.
I, I just thought never is a pretty strong word when we don't have anybody from the PSC online, so I just, my question, I'm sorry.
Yep.
All right, Sarah, Jim, Joyce, anything?
Well, this is Jim Webber. It seems to me like there's not a huge downside, uh, to terminating the agreement because we are still required to perform the same service that we're doing today. We can't change that until the PSC approves the agreements. Is that, am I correct in that?
That's correct.
So I don't see any reason to, you know, th- this thing has, has dragged on for a number, I, I, I hear all kinds of stories here, but this is dragging on way too long. It needs to, it needs to get fixed. We cannot, my understanding is that the kind of agreement we have is not viable, is not acceptable, not acceptable, and PSC wants us to change it. So we need to move in that direction and we need to move, I think fairly quickly. This, this gets us going.
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
And, you know, I, I would like to say, just, just, uh, so everybody hears this, you know, from my standpoint as utility director, I would prefer to see a consolidation of some sort. How we work that out, I guess that's what I'm after, you know? None of us want, none of us want to go down the road of a separation, at least I don't think people do. Um, you know, I would like to, consolidation in my opinion is gonna be way easier, uh, to do than a separation. Um, and I think it's just, it's a matter of, and that's why we're trying so hard, you know, for all these years to, to get to that point. Um, you know, there is, there is, uh, two documents out there, you know, that, that we had delivered, the, um, I can't remember what they are now, the, basically the purchase agreement and then the, the maintenance agreement, um, type thing. So, I mean, they are out there, you know, and this, this could be something as simple as, you know, we, we, we take those agreements, we start working through those agreements and if, if the two communities can come up with something, um, you know, we can, we can make a consolidation, you know? It, it doesn't mean that, that, you know, North Hudson's gonna be excluded from, from anything, you know? I mean, when it comes to projects and different stuff like that, you know, basically it means I'm gonna have to go to more meetings, um, you know, to where I'm gonna have to get, you know, with public works and things like that to see what, what's going on in the village, you know? Do we need to, to redo water mains? We need to redo sanitary sewer, you know, mains, things like that. So, you know, I, I guess from my opinion, I would, I would prefer to see a consolidation than a separation. So whatever that's worth, um, I, I guess I just wanted it out there.
All right, thank you. Anybody else?
Yeah, I would like to add that in the meeting with the Public Utilities Commission that we, well, you know, Suzie, when we had the motion to, uh, recommend to the council that we withdraw from the agreement, um, Suzie Corum said, is there any reason not to approve this? And we couldn't come up with, with anything. Um, and that really it is our job, um, as a city council to protect the city from liability, which is the big question that we've got, is that we've got liability for water that is being provided through, uh, water mains that we don't own.
Okay, anybody else?
I, I have a question to follow up with Joyce's, um, statement. I, I'm trying to understand if we do take, if, if we were to go that route and if the city took ownership of the mains and remediation was found to be needed, who would pay for that remediation?
So again, I think we're, we're talking about kind of details of those draft consolidation agreements where we have to work that out before we take that step. I mean, we need to know before, if consolidation's the option and we, and we look at that, everybody needs to know what they're getting into going into it. I mean, we need to know if there does need to be something done with those lines, are we paying for it? Are you paying for it? How are we doing? You need to know who's paying for it. So I can't give you that answer because we have to work that out. I mean, if we're gonna consolidate, that's part of that agreement is who does pay for those costs or if nothing else, we need to do a, I would assume, before we do something like that, if we went towards consolidation, we'd have to do some sort of, um, like review of the whole system just to make sure when we sign off, it's like you buy a house, hey, you're done, you signed this paper, that's yours. If you find a problem tomorrow, that's what your home inspection, you know what I mean? So that's something we would have to work out with as part of it. I couldn't just give you an answer right now. Sorry.
All right, anybody else?
Um, all I would like to add is when we first started this meeting, we were talking about how we could work together. Um, our attorney twice asked why we need to determine or get rid of our contract. We may disagree why or not, but from North Hudson's stand, uh, I, we don't feel like that needs to happen, we can still work through this with that going. It sometimes feels like you're putting us in this awkward situation with getting rid of that, like it feels like you're forcing us to make these decisions when we can. of that, like, it feels like you're forcing us to make these decisions when we can move forward and make them. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Kirk. Anybody else?
So is consolidation, Tim, an option for you guys?
Randy, Randy, we, we'll have to go back and look at the agreements. We know both the agreements, the asset transfer agreement was one, Kip, and the other one was, I can't think of the name, the main one. Anyways, there were, as I stated earlier, Kip, I'm sorry, Randy, there were some things in there that, of course, we definitely called out, and, and Aaron's right, we never brought that back to the table, but, I don't know, I mean, we're, we're talking about, is there potential where, you know, we could own our own wells, you know, that, throw that out there, it's to go, you know, roll that down, that table. I think there's a lot of things we need to talk and bring back to the table, and I think it's gonna happen soon, and just, not the decision doesn't have to happen soon, but the, the communication and the conferencing calls and the overall discussions have to start back up, because we've, we've gone a while here now, and I, I don't know, we just, we just don't feel good right now about consolidation, but we have to talk more about it, you know, we have to talk more about it.
Well, the original consolidation proposal is we just give our infrastructure over to Hudson, and we assume the responsibility for any liabilities of the digs. That's the way it was written when we first saw it, I don't understand.
So Stan, is that something you're okay with, or no? Besides liability?
Uh, that would be, uh, eco.
But with that, to add comment to that, Randy, and we talked about this, there's a lot of work, no matter what direction we go, because it has to be approval by both, of course, our two parties here involved, plus the PSC, plus the DNR. So it's gonna be a lot of time to take this through, a lot of steps.
Well, yeah, and if you guys wanted to start your own utility, my gosh, you got wells to drill, people to hire, you know, a lot, a lot of expenses, so if we're talking money.
Well, the wells are there, we're not, we just begin.
Yeah, we'd just be asking you for them.
For them, yeah. But again, that's all part of negotiations, that's why we have to start talking about, yeah. The wells are there.
It seemed like anything but consolidation is gonna add cost to the whole system. It's gonna cost North Hudson more money.
Actually, agreements would be cheaper.
Pardon?
I said, if we addressed the concerns that Kip originally sent to us in our 83 agreements, which we think we have now, all we need to do is clarify or redo those agreements, which was one of the options that was presented by Rukert Milky.
Yeah, it's in that form, please read that.
Please read it.
Again, it doesn't address the ownership of the lines, which is our underlying main concern here.
And, and let's keep in mind, Rukert Milky is not an attorney on water law either. I mean, all we're going off of, you know, we, it keeps getting brought up that we, all we have to do is rewrite the agreements, while our attorney is telling us point blank, that is not an option.
PSC said, they, the PSC answered that. It's in the Rukert Milky.
In her opinion, it is not an option.
The Rukert Milky addressed it with the PSC, it's at the very end of that, that study done by Rukert Milky, letters to the PSC are in there, and their responses to her questions are in there, are somebody's questions from the city. Please read those answers.
Again, let's, I think it's time to start talking, right, and communicating.
What are our next steps? We seem to be kind of spinning our wheels here.
Well, I think one next step, thank you, Kathy, is that we need to sit down with PSC and DNR, I think we all agree with that, I mean, get them on a table that was brought up earlier. And we know what we have to do in our end, we have to submit some activities to Aaron, ask him for, from additional detailed information, what we're looking for. And that's gonna take us time to understand what direction we'll have to go.
And, and my question would be for, for the city council and for Andrew with the utility commission and, I guess, whoever, you know, how do, how do you guys want to pers, how do you guys wanna keep going with this? I mean, do, does the whole city council wanna be involved in every single meeting that we're gonna have on this? Do you guys want to make up a different ad hoc committee? What, I, that's what I'm looking for, too, is just direction on, on what, what should happen here.
And I don't think tonight's the night that you make that decision as a council. You know, this was mostly just to try to get all these questions, everything we talked about tonight talked about. The process as we move forward is something the council needs to talk about at some point, but that's a, you know, that's a council discussion, I mean, we don't need to have it in a, in a joint meeting, but yeah. And I, and I think from our perspective, next steps for the city, that's the last page of Lori's memo, and lays it out pretty clearly, what, what our next steps will be moving forward, and that's what we intend to recommend. And it, it matches up, Kathy, with what I think you guys just talked about with your next steps, too. And Tim, as far as, you know, we need to sit down with the DNR and the PSC. We definitely do. But I think to do that, it would be good if North Hudson, you had all your questions answered, that's for sure. You know, let's, send us, send us whatever it is you're, you're looking for, so when we do sit down, you've got everything you think you need for your half that conversation as we, as we start doing this. And again, if consolidation's on the table, but in a different format, that's all, we need to know that, too. I mean, we can skip the whole sit down with the PSC and everybody, if we can, if we get from you and your attorney a marked up agreement for the consolidation that we can talk about, then, you know, maybe we do that. I mean, if that's on the table still, I, I think that's easy. You get us your marked up version, let's sit down and talk about it and see if we can come to an agreement on that. But I think then if that's not on the table, or we can't come to some sort of agreement on that, I think then that's that clear next step, is that we, we sit down with the PSC and the DNR and start talking about everything.
Something that I found helpful in negotiations is, you can mark up that agreement that we sent you and say, this is all wrong, but you need to come back and say, here's our proposal. Give us something to work with.
Yep. I agree.
All right. Any closing comments, anybody?
I'd just like to say thank you for the, to the council and to Mr. Mayor for listening or letting us get this out in the open. And there's definitely some issues that, I don't know how they're being discussed or whatever, but that we still have, so, and we will work with Aaron and company to try to get those resolved, and we're looking forward, I mean, you know, an agreement that we had worked for many, many years, and there's just some tweaking that could be done, and I think that would work, and it would cost us all a lot less. My biggest, North Hudson's biggest concern is that we're being treated, as a user of the water facility, that we're being treated equally with the city of Hudson, and being charged equally with the city of Hudson.
I wanted to say thanks to Mr. Mayor for letting us have this meeting.
Thank you all for being part of it.
I agree. Thank you.
All right, well, unless there's any objection, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We got a motion, a second to adjourn. Once again, thank you, everybody, for being here tonight, hopefully this will end up with something very productive for all of us, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion's proved, we stand adjourned, thanks again, everybody.